Okay, thank you all for being here. This event is held by the Hayfork Chamber of Commerce. And this, I don't, I was wondering how many years this tradition has ran that Tuesday night, a few weeks before each election, the Hayfork Chamber of Commerce holds a candidate's name. Charlene, do you have any idea how long it's been going on? Decades?
Yes.
Yes.
Before our start, which was 2002.
Oh, alright, so over 20 years, this is a tradition that the Hayfork Chamber of Commerce has done, Tuesday night at seven, that the community gets together and asks anyone on the ballot who's bold enough to show up here, a question. And then as it goes, our tradition is, you write your question on the card, then I as the moderator will ask them. So the format for everybody is you get five minutes to open. Measure M is five minutes altogether. And then school board, each member gets five minutes to introduce yourselves. Each question directed at you, you get eight minutes, and then closing, two minutes. And I have my iPad, and I'm gonna have a timer for reference. And if you go real long, I'll start ringing. I don't have that many questions, I have about 10. So please add questions in the back and I will pick them up and ask the group. This microphone is gonna go down the way, it's gonna be shared, hopefully it's not too awkward. And if it needs, we turn it up some, we can manage that, okay? A little bit, great, awesome, thank you. And thank you all for being here, candidates and public. You ready? Oh, Sally Alder.
Hi, I have to talk fast, we don't have very much time. I'm here for Measure M, and Measure M is to get a little more funding for the Hayfork Park and Pool. I wanted to give you some history about the Park and Pool, and I wanna go back to the 1930s, start there. I wasn't there then, but, but what I heard is that our town sold the park to the county for about a hundred bucks. Dennis, how much was it?
A hundred or a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, not very much money, with the promise that there would be a county park there. We don't have any of the documents to prove that, but that's how the story goes. And then, fast forward to the 1960s, and then the county told us if the community could raise the funds to build the pool, the county would then take over the maintenance, upkeep, and liability. Again, we don't have any of this in writing. Bob Flint, Bud Falc, and Eddie Murison were the three main movers and shakers on the pool project. The town started raising money, and Charlie St. Jake walked into town from Forest Glen with a pouch full of gold nuggets to contribute. They got tired of all the hoops the county was making them jump through. One day, Eddie Murison asked, "Where do you want this pool built?" He left and came back with a piece of equipment and dug the hole, approval or not. So the pool was completed and opened by the summer of 1967. At the beginning of each swim season, Charlie Wykoff would bring the fire truck down and empty the pool. The volunteer firefighters and the scouts would clean the pool each year, refill it, and get it ready for another summer of fun. That was 57 years ago. Fast forward to 1988. The park wasn't being well-maintained by the county, so the citizens formed the Park District with a local five-member elected board, so that we could have local control over the management of Hayfork Park and Pool. Measure A was passed in 1990 to fund the new park rec. district with a $10 assessment per parcel owner. Fast forward to now, today, as we all know, costs have gone up over the last 35 years. $10 per parcel owner is not enough. Measure M will assess each parcel $30 and repeal and replace Measure A. This means that the property owners in our district will pay a total of $30 per parcel. This will be a cost per parcel of only $2.50 per month, which is an additional $1.67 over what people are paying now. We want to maintain local control of our Park and Pool, it's a Hayfork tradition.
When I moved to Hayfork 15 years ago with my one-year-old son, I didn't know anyone. The playground at the park is where we made our first relationships with other parents and children in this town. There aren't many other places in Hayfork for this to happen before your child enters school. It was the initial stepping stone to my involvement in Hayfork. At three years old, my son played his first T-ball game at the baseball field, which sparked his love of sports. When Hayfork Little League and Trinity Little League combined, I joined the Trinity Little League Board as the Hayfork representative and started working closely with the park board. We've formed a wonderful relationship throughout the county, bringing people together to support our youth. These games are the framework for our successful high school sports teams we currently have and will have in the future. The field also hosts the annual big ball tournament that provides thousands of dollars to the Hayfork Athletics Program. There are many sports that happen at the park beyond baseball, which include basketball, volleyball, soccer, kickball, and skateboarding. The park hosts many wonderful events such as Summer in the Park, Hayfork Gathering Exchange, the Light Spur, watershed trainings, birthday parties, and more. Both of my children have learned to swim through the years of swimming lessons at the pool. The park is a fun, safe place for our kids to meet and create lifelong relationships. The experiences the park offers are the building blocks for our youth to be successful members of this community. Supporting Measure M will allow the park board to continue to maintain this important space in our community.
Hi, my name's Maria Lane Mercille, and I've been, I think, at the pool for probably 26 to 28 years, spending my summers there, helping our children become water-safe. That's super important here, that's the number-one reason for children drowning between ages of one to five, is drowning is the number-one reason for death. And I just wanted to say, when I moved here, the first place I was drawn to was the pool because I love to swim, and I've always been teaching lifeguards. That's another thing that's at the pool, is we give, provide a lot of jobs for children, I mean, for young adults and teenagers at the pool, and I think it's just super important to have that opportunity. And I can tell you that there have been hundreds and hundreds each year of children that we help between the ages of four months and five years, six years, to learn how to swim. Plus now, we have a lot of other programs, like our swim clinics, our Hayfork Swim Team. We have exercises for people that like to get in shape, and a lot of elderly people come. So it's not just the young people that are excited about being at the pool, a lot of older people find a lot of support there for their health and fitness. The Indian Valley Summer Camp is a, it's a big part of, of the, sorry, it's a big part of, of the camp. They come there every day or very often, and I just, the park's so important for our town, I just wanna encourage everyone to just consider, consider keeping it open. And with this measure, we can do that. Even years ago, when it was the $10 per year, per tax year, whatever, we barely made it. People would sell their houses and donate their property to the pool. We somehow get by because of the generous people of this town, and I can say that's the only reason it's open, and now that friends of the park, that really helps us. So, thank you for listening.
Thanks, everybody. My name's Adrian Keyes. I just wanna say, I know nobody likes taxes, I don't like taxes, it's a pain in the butt, we gotta do it. It's, to me, in the 22 years I've been here, it's this sort of community action and the story behind this park that makes me proud to live in Hayfork. And I will more than happily pay $30 a year for my parcels to be part of that legacy. So, that's probably all I've got time for, so I'm just gonna wrap it up and leave it there, but please vote yes on Measure M.
Any questions?
No, everybody has five minutes opening. So, you have five minutes, I'll start your timer.
Hello, my name is Chris Seamer, well officially John Seamer. Short story about that, I, when I was young, my dad's brother was named John, and so my parents hated Johnny or Jack, so I was Chris, I've been Chris all my life, so everyone in town knows me as Chris. I was born to a family of nine children. I spent most of my younger days teaching my younger brothers and sisters everything from tying their shoes to popping bubbles. I moved to Hayfork in 1977 with my wife and two young children. I taught school at Hayfork Elementary. At first, I taught first grade, then I taught fourth grade, first grade, junior high, then I moved to the high school, where I taught history, English, art, drama, cooking, yearbook. Small high school, you teach almost everything. I'm a firm believer in the value of education. I think education is one thing that liberates young people, gives them the opportunity to go out in the world and create their own vision of what they want for their lives. I strongly believe in arts education, athletics, vocational education. I think a well-rounded student will do much better in the world than one who is, has a limited view of the world. All in all, that's who I am, that's what I'm about. I can say, I've taught for 30 years, and substitute after that. I think I can add valuable perspective to the school board. Thank you.
Do I need this, do you guys all hear me without the microphone?
Use the mic.
Okay, we need to use the mic? Alright, I'll use the mic. Alright, so my name's Kenny Wiley, and I'm currently the president of the school district, the board on the Mountain Valley Unified School District. And there's, there's a lot of stuff that we can say tonight about where, where we wanna go, and what we wanna do, and what our goals are, and I would say that if everyone's goals to be on the board are not about putting the kids first, then you shouldn't even be running, so we all know that. So those things moving forward, we all know, and that's great. It's the things that we need to look back on to say, especially when there's people who are incumbents, like myself or Sidney Brown, you know, what have you guys done that is good that we wanna keep maintaining? So that's, that's the question of, you know, when there's a new candidate running, the question is, are you happy with what's been going on the last four years? For myself, for example, and Sidney's about three years, or do you wanna change? That is what the question is. So to speak to that super quickly, I think the easiest way to say it is this, if you guys attended the Booster Club Hall of Fame Dinner the other night, that, in a nutshell, is, is where our school is right now. The Booster Club is crushing it, and that's great, and that's extracurricular, and that's fun, and that's awesome. The Booster Club and these different departments who put that on, and the different departments that are benefiting from that, like I'm talking to Ag Department and, you know, not just athletics, but all the extracurriculars, those are supported by the school, by the school board. I think that we're really functioning at a high level with that, it's fun and it's great. There's things that are going on at the school that people kinda can take some issue with, like getting rid of some extracurricular stuff, that we as a school board are saying, these things are not as important during the school hours, and we want to go into more interventions in reading and math, because as much as the extracurricular stuff is fun, it's not as important as these kids being at or above grade level, that's what our goals are. So I would say, when you wanna decide who you're voting for, look back on the last four years, see if you're satisfied with that, see if you're happy with the momentum of where the school is going right now, and, and vote accordingly. This is a small town, this guy did happen to teach me in first grade, he did happen to teach me in 12th grade, so he's known me quite a while. I don't have any, you know, we don't have any hard feelings towards each other, so it's not, it's not necessarily, you know, me against him or Sid, but it's about, look at what's going on at the school right now. The five board members right now, Joe, Sid, Heather, Frank Moore recently, and myself have been there, you know, really a short amount of time. We've done a lot of workshops and a lot of professional development at the board level, that when the beginning, I was thinking, we don't need to do all this stuff, we just need to get in all these little, you know, we need to get into all these little issues and, and fix them, and that's what my goal was in the beginning, and that is not proper, I'm telling you right now. I had to learn over a couple of years what's proper as a board, and is to manage the superintendent and ensure that he or she, right now, obviously, Emery Swannstrom, is managing her site principals well, and that the principals, and that the principals are handling their sites and their teachers well. We have had a serious challenge with the lack of minding your lane and minding the leadership in our school, and that has, I feel, not completely gone away, but it's definitely been respected much more, and it's created a, a much more highly functioning school district. So I don't wanna change the momentum of that, you know, no offense to Chris, he's been a teacher for a long time, and that's great, that's a great perspective, but the school board is a different beast, it's not about being a teacher, it's about managing a school, and I don't wanna lose the momentum that the school board has with their professional development to continue on with the school. So that's why I would like you to vote for me. Thank you.
Just take your claps. Yes, Heather is gonna go in for Sidney, and speak her, and share her statement, and then Chris Williams will do the same for Andy Johnson, who wasn't able to make it.
Hi, I'm Heather Dosman, and I'm reading a letter for Sidney Brown. She is on the ballot, she's currently on the school board, but she's also up for reelection. Sorry I couldn't be here tonight, I am an assistant coach for Hayfork High School Volleyball, and we are playing indoors against Butte Valley. I have served on the board for Mountain Valley Unified School District since I was appointed in April of 2021. Part of my motivation for running was because I am a mother to four daughters who are all in our school system. The other part is seeing what's happening in other districts in California and not wanting that for our children. I strongly believe our small, excuse me, small community is different than our state as a whole, and that our kids are better off for it. Our children are lucky to grow up in a town and school district where everyone knows them by name. In the last three years, I have grown as a board member to be more involved in our school sites, getting to know a lot of these kids. I care not only for each child's education, but also their well-being. This district has been noted for caring for all our students in a way that gives them more opportunities when they leave us. I trust in our board, administration, and staff that we are taking care of all of our children's needs, along with giving them the best education we can offer. In the last three years, our board has attended multiple trainings to improve our knowledge and understanding of the role of the board and how we can best support our district. We've created new goals for this district. One, to create more structured opportunities for parent involvement and decision-making that leads to higher participation and school pride. And two, develop a system of support for our students through partnerships that leads to greater success in the students' area of interest. We have also faced many challenges together with staff and administration, so we have created, we have created guidelines for these as well. One, communicate clear, honest goals from day one. Two, put students first, and three, know and establish boundaries. Not only are we prepared for the challenges we may face, but we also get to celebrate our students' biggest accomplishments, accomplishments for our district. Most recently is the literacy program Clock along just started at the elementary school site ran by Emily Harrison and Kent Cox. I'm looking forward to seeing how these kids can succeed with this program. Another great thing is that our enrollment continues to grow year after year. One reason might be our sports programs we can offer here are very desirable for kids in smaller communities around us. Another could be that our Ag Department ran by Morgan Rourke and Noah Cork is like no one else's. This program has so much to offer and opens up so many doors for our students when they graduate high school. They can join the workforce with lots of skills and potential or continue on to college. Another big reason we stand out among schools, I believe, is because our staff has a history of giving so much one-on-one attention and support to each student, leading to higher test scores. Which brings me to the test scores. We had the highest in our county last year. We also ranked first in ELA and first in math among similar districts in our state for the CASP testing, there were 60 similar districts. One big accomplishment the last couple of years is our school pride is coming back to our town. We got to witness this in full force last week at the Homecoming and the Hall of Fame Dinner, the Booster Club started for past outstanding athletes. It brought a lot of people back to Hayfork who are still so proud of this community. Lastly, I would like you all to know that I am committed to serve this district in any way that I can, I love our community. I am very proud to say, since I joined the board in 2021, we've been supporting and leading changes that are improving the district. I would greatly appreciate your support in the future. Thank you.
Uh, no, you can start, you can start, and then Chris will, whenever he can, just let me know when.
Hi, everybody, thanks for having us, and thanks to the Hayfork Chamber for hosting us. My name is Amanda Barriger. I grew up in Junction City. I am now also raising my children in the same house that I grew up in, my kids are two and four, and I'm just really grateful to be part of this community. I was fortunate as a young adult to travel out of Trinity County, but what I learned was that this place is really special. And after I graduated college, I came back and just really grateful to be part of this community and raising my kids in the same authentic, genuine way that I got to grow up here. Currently, I work for Ascend Wilderness Experience, I'm the executive director. I've been working there since 2016. I took up the helm and for the first few years, worked for free. It's a community service that has a lot of youth programs. We do a lot of trail work in the Trinity Alps. I've gotten to it to a point where we have four year-round staff now, and anywhere between six to 10 seasonal. So there's, I'm really proud of the accomplishments with Ascend, and just creating jobs in Trinity County, and creating more community services. I graduated school with two degrees, one was in environmental sustainability, and the other was cultural anthropology, and the gist of those was really about economics, policies, and sociology, and how those things shape communities. So my education, my experience with Ascend, and also other previous work experience like wildland firefighting, has lent itself well to my experience with the PUD Board. I first attended, started attending meetings with the PUD Board about four years ago, initially. I had no agenda to be on the board. I was just genuinely interested in the complexities of the PUD, and it had aligned with some of the experiences that I had had with work, including working for congressional staff, just promoting legislation for Trinity County, going to DC to lobby. And so I attended about two years of PUD meetings, and it is a lot to take in and learn about. After about two years of just being public presence at the meetings, that's when vacancies happen on the board. I had a number of people approach me and encourage me to apply for the appointment. I really hadn't considered that before, but once I started thinking about it, I felt like my experience, and also having had been present for a couple of years of meetings, served the PUD, there really aren't that many people that go to those meetings, and these issues that they're dealing with are incredibly complex. Environment, natural resources, electricity, water, agencies, it's a lot going on with the PUD. So I could never have imagined jumping on the PUD Board without that kind of initial experience, and so I was happy to be of service, and that was about two years ago. So I now have about four years of experience with the PUD Board under my belt, and we are up for reelection. I just wanna say that our board is doing really well. There was longstanding tenured board members for decades on the PUD Board, and just a couple of years ago, there was probably the biggest shuffle of board members that we've ever had. And, you know, now, the board that is in place has been working together for a couple of years, and we're just getting a lot of great momentum, we work well together, we have a lot of projects that we've been working on and that we are hoping to continue working towards. And like I said, it's a lot going on with the PUD, and it's taken years to wrap my head around the complexities of what it means to, you know, be of service to this board. And so I think that's really important to take into account, that it, it takes a long time and understanding to, to jump in and do what it needs to, what needs to be done for the PUD Board. So, thank you for having me here, and I'll pass it on.
Carrie's working on, like, has that one?
Oh, yeah, I was, it was hard to tell.
You did a good job, Jessica.
Okay.
Maybe it's working now.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Joe Trendad, I'm a local electrical contractor here in Hayfork. My biggest desire, I guess, is to serve my community, and so when this opportunity became available to run for the PUD Board, I wanted to, you know, just put my name out there and see if I could help, see if my services were needed. Been electrician for 35 years, came out of Modesto in 2019, we bought our place here in town in 2010, and I just, I really love this place, love Trinity County, and I just wanna serve, just wanna serve wherever I'm needed. Thank you so much.
Hi. My name's Ryan Crockett, I am a wife to Micah Crockett, sitting right here, and the mother of two boys, which we are just entering the teenage years with both of them. The gray hair, gets covered. Our family moved to Trinity County eight years ago when my husband took a promotion with Caltrans, and he took it without us ever even stepping foot in Trinity, kind of a blind date, as you will. That following weekend, we drove up here, and we instantly fell in love with Trinity's natural beauty and robust history. Once settled, I knew I wanted to serve this community in some capacity. I think we can all agree that we, that Trinity is worth serving. In 2020, we opened up Up North Confectionery in Merken Town, Weaverville, serving ice cream and gifts. In those four, in those short four years, we have expanded to include an eatery, and we have employed over 70 young adults in that time. We have become one of the top ice cream shops by volume in the North State, according to our distributor. We have worked hard to create a thriving business in Trinity County, where the cost of doing business is high, along with many other challenges. As a small business owner, I find myself studying the trends of consumers in rural small-town California, often traveling to similar towns to learn their accomplishments and bring that back to my community. After, after sturdy ground was achieved in our business, I started looking at other ways to serve and improve our community. After many years on the Douglas Slade Booster Board, I transitioned into the Trinity High Athletic Booster Board, where we work to fundraise and provide all the bells and whistles for the sports programs at the high school. As a family, we have been active in youth community service groups such as Boy Scouts, Rotting Gun Club, 4H, and FFA. I am a member of the Architectural Review Committee, serving Weaverville and Lewiston's historic districts. I really enjoy serving on this committee as I find the preservation of local history rewarding for both residents and tourists. This year, I was elected as a board member on the Weaverville Chamber of Commerce, where our focus has been to increase commerce for the local economy by creating close relationships with the business community and hosting exciting events to increase, to increase local and visitor participation. My interests and goals are fairly simple. It is to preserve the hard work achieved by our predecessors, and maintain a healthy environment, and build a flourishing economy for the generations to come. Thank you.
Someone turn it, I hit the button. Is it red?
It's green.
Green.
Okay! We'll see how long it lasts.
You did a good job, Jessica.
It goes out and I don't realize, just do it. Kind of a thing.
Anyway, my name is Marilyn Cox, I am a fourth generation of Trinity County. I was lucky to be born into the Scott family up in the north part of the state, I mean, county, where, where service to the community was always present. My grandfather, when the branch was put in, it broke his heart to think of the town of Trinity Center dying, so he established the town in his upper fields and developed it, and did lots, and sold it very cheap to the people that lived in the town, and that is why we have Trinity Center, is because my grandpa reestablished it, because he loves this community. I was born and raised in Trinity Center, went to Trinity High School, and went on to BYU to get a degree in finance. I live in Weaverville with my husband Dave and our three children. I have been a teacher at Weaverville Elementary School for 24 years, where I have taught third, fourth, and fifth graders, and I see a student of mine right there, that I still bug about his handwriting. I've had lots of leadership roles there, in negotiation teams, in grade-level teams, and math leadership. Is this long?
No.
Okay, I'm just gonna put it down then, if that's okay. I'm very active in my church, I am very active, was very active in Boy Scouts, I was America- I was a merit badge counselor and I helped many boys get their Eagle Scouts in, or Eagle, including my own two boys. My children are very active in 4H and FFA and we support them and the kids um, in the best way that we can in raising the animals and providing the best product that they can to offer to the community. I am also the president of the Ed Scott Scholarship. I am very happy about that scholarship. It's my, in my grandfather's name. But it is a scholarship that serves the entire county, Southern Trinity, Hayfork, and Trinity High. And wherever first place is um, awarded, second place has to go to the other high schools. For, the first recipient was Jay Felch, who is a member of the Hayfork community. And uh, this year, we were also able to award J.C. Pickett a scholarship to help her with her education in uh, Montana. Why am I running? I appreciate our local PUD and want to do all that I can to support them in continuing to provide safe, reliable energy at the lowest cost possible. I appreciate how fortunate we are to live in an area where we do have such low power rates. I have family that lives all over the country and their power bills are often very similar to their mortgages. And they have very much considered where they're going to live based on the rate of their power. Uh, low power rates have come at actually a great sacrifice to my family. In the 30s and 40s and 50s, my grandparents developed a uh, cow ranch and a guest ranch up in the north part of the county. We had 20 cabins, mini barns and outbuildings, 240 acres of uh, irrigated pasture land, horses, huge gardens that's, that fed the 75 to 80 guests that were there every week throughout the summer. In the mid 50s, the government came in and told us that we would, that my grandparents, uh, told my grandparents that they'd be putting in the lake and that the life my grandparents had built would no longer be. They would get $105,000 for everything that they would lose. But my grandpa always said that it was stolen from them. Our family did not want the lake, but the dam came and it's here now. And we all benefit from cheap power from that dam. I want to honor my family. Sorry. By maintaining benef, uh, the benefits committed to Trinity County, citizens of low power, low power rates. I believe that my education, my commitment to service would make me a good candidate for the PUD Board and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
I'm gonna pass, I think I can talk about both. Can you hear me, Logan? Uh, my name's Alex Cousins. That's, that's a tough act to follow.
Sorry, Alex.
I've known Marilyn for, for a while. We went to school together, so I, I've seen that side of her before. I was uh, born, I was born and raised in, in Hyam Palm. So I lived down there probably 10 years. In 1986, I, we moved to Weaverville. I graduated from Trinity High School. I got my undergraduate degree at Chico, my master's degree at San Diego State, and then eventually made it back to Trinity County and worked a, a variety of jobs. I worked as a county planner, worked for the Forest Service, environmental consulting. Probably the most time I spent was here in Hayfork. I spent six years uh, building houses with uh, Bob Hildebrandt and then eventually ended up at uh, Weaverville at the Resource Conservation District. I currently work at the Sawmill. I manage sales for the Weaverville Mill and then two over on the coast and potentially a third in the south. So I might be headed to Alabama every once in a while, but that's to, to, uh, to be seen. I started getting involved with the PUD in 2015. I went to Washington DC with them to lobby and attended board meetings. I tried to get on the board. I submitted a letter of interest in 2017. I wasn't selected. Uh, respectfully, my quirk was, which was a good decision. I then resubmitted a letter of interest in 2019 and I was selected. I was then reelected in 2020 and so now I'm up for reelection. I'm currently the vice president. Other board have been since 2020 and I'm also a member of the Northwest Public Power Association Board. So that's a, that's a board, that's a group that's 18 different public power associations throughout um, northern United States. Everything from Alaska, Wyoming. We meet three times a year. It's, it's really important because it allows us to understand what other small communities are doing. Public power is pretty powerful, right? I mean, there's not a lot of places that have public power. We don't have an investment-owned utility. PG&E would be the one, which we're in control of what we're doing, right? And I, I, that, that's why I want to be on this board, right? All the skills that I have, I could go do anything. But the public power side of it is what pushes me to do this because it's, it's huge. I mean, the, the power we get, the fact that I can connect with everybody here. I get phone calls from Hyam Palm when the power goes out. When's it coming on? I can find out. I can give answers, right? I can give people answers about their, their rates, whether they like them or not. It's, you know, we're doing things as a board to make these decisions. And I, I think that um, going back to what Kenny said, you know, our board is a good board, right? I'm gonna respect everybody who's up here, but I think that the five people that we have on that board represent Trinity County very well. We've been working very strongly together to improve the infrastructure of the PUD. The resiliency is just as important as the low rates. Low rates without power, if, if trees fall down, it doesn't mean anything. You need your power all winter long. We're spending a lot of money right now to remove hazard trees, replace poles, because we want to harden that infrastructure today so that this winter, your power doesn't go out. And our current board is doing everything we can to widen the right-of-ways, to reduce the risks from catastrophic wildfire. I don't know how many people here are familiar with strict liability, but if any board member doesn't know what strict liability is, that they, they might not want to be on the board. It's, it's, it's the, it's the opposite of imminent domain, right? And so because we're allowed to put in power lines, we have 100% responsibility of what happens in those. Somebody knocks down a power pole, starts a fire, it's our fault. We don't have liability insurance right now because of strict liability. So our board is doing everything that it can as a group to try and harden our system. So I think that if there's one thing I could say, it's the experience that our board has that's really important to keep. So I think with that, I'll sit down.
I need a mic. Andy needs a microphone. He just told me. Okay. Hi, I'm Chris Lace. I'm reading this candidate's statement on behalf of Andy Johnson. Hello, my name is Andy Johnson. Read so well. First, I want to thank the Hayfork Chamber of Commerce for providing, providing this important forum. Second, I want to apologize for not being able to be with you all in person tonight. A family emergency has required me to travel out of state last minute and I appreciate those who understand the hard decision but also value, that are also the value I place on family. I was elected in 2020 to the Trinity PUD Board. I've served as a Trinity County Alaska Commissioner for nearly four years and I'm active in the North Fork Range, where I currently serve as vice president. During my first four years at PUD, we worked hard on rate adjustments that were fair and equitable. Unfortunately, costs for everything have increased for the district and aging infrastructure needs upgrades. I was adamant about public involvement and we ended up having numerous public meetings during the process. Know that those who showed up were heard loud and clear. A consensus always revealed reliable service and public safety were top concerns in addition to keeping low rates. I am sure some in attendance tonight will have some concerns surrounding cannabis farmers' access to power and how they impact the economics of our utility. I don't think the current high-impact rates are completely arbitrary. I also have not seen the specific cost of service study completed that would convince me cannabis farmers' higher rates are justified to continue into the future. We in a board that understands rates need to be fair for all businesses. I will continue to advocate for this and urge the voters to elect non-biased board members regarding these issues. Many Trinity residents are understandably concerned with the right-of-way expansion plans. What will 130-feet power line right-of-ways look like? How much will be added protection to our system from forest fires and potential lyme-strike costs? Over 3 million have been spent on environmental study and the draft EIR slash EIS hasn't even been released yet. The current schedule puts the draft release out to public comment in early 2025. The inability for Trinity PUD to obtain wildfire insurance forces us to take greater protective measures. We have quadrupled the amount spent on tree trimming, vegetation management, and hazard tree removals in the last four years, nearly $3 million per year. Okay. PUD staff has been actively pursuing grants to help fund wildfire mitigation activity. Grants in collaboration with public agencies and local organizations are critical to expanding our power line right-of-way costs effectively and creating healthier forest conditions in the long term. I encourage you to reach out to me directly with any questions you may have. You can also follow my campaign on Facebook to learn more about me. I want to emphasize that the last four years have been an incredible learning experience for me. Experience does matter. If you entrust me with your vote, I will continue using this knowledge to advocate for our residents and rate pairs. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you, Andy. You're welcome. Next, we've, this is dead all the way. We'll come up here. And there are better. This one, this one doesn't. Hi. Mike Greer next with the, he's running for state assembly. Yes? I've just probably.
This is not the first time I've been here. I baked an ice cream at the shop. I'm hanging down.
Thank you.
It seems like I'm at home here as I listen to what everybody's saying. I've been to the school board meetings. Okay, I'm the school board president. I'm from Crescent City, running for state assembly from Santa Rosa up to the Oregon border. I lived there in Crescent City. I'm on the school board there. I've been on the school board for over 20 years. Uh, I actually, right now, represent Del Norte County as a County Office of Education trustee and a Unified School District trustee. And with the State California School Board Association, I am the Region 1 Director for Del Norte, Humboldt, Mendocino, and Lake Counties. I'm also the representative uh, for County Office of Education on the Legislative Committee for the California School Board Association so that all education bills that are offered to the legislature gets to come forth to us to see what we think about it, deny it, you know, give our opinion of it, amend it. I've had a lot of chance to say, this isn't really what our people in rural communities want. Unfortunately, once we get that bill, it goes back to legislatures and it gets passed. Uh, I've been up here, the last time I was, it was 104 degrees during the county fair. And I was real anxious to get back to Crescent City where it was about 60 degrees. When I left this morning, it was 58 degrees in Crescent City to come up here. Some of the things I'm looking at doing, education is one of my main things. 20 years as a teacher, a lot of years as a California Teachers Association here in Crescent, and Service Center Chair over five rural counties, over Palooza County, Yuba County, Southern County, Nevada County, and Sierra County. I understand what rural counties need. After I retired from teaching, I was also on the school board at that same time. I was there at the time of the campfire. After we lost everything in the campfire, we relocated to Crescent City. At the time of the campfire, I was the school board president. So I stayed an extra year there in paradise, rebuilding the school district, making sure the kids were able to attend schools wherever they had located their temporary housing at. So we're able to do that. So I stayed there for a year, so I learned about all the issues that we have. As I go up and down the district and visit all the different rural ones, we have the same things. The things that you believe in is the things that I believe in. You know, we need to go ahead and strengthen our educational standards. Rural schools are going to be hit hard over the next two years, as you know. You've been to the trainings, you know what's going on in the school board. Absolutely essential to have your plan in place, not for this coming year, five years down the road because of what's going on with school funding. How do we get qualified teachers? How do we qualify administration? How do we get the funds to rebuild our schools? All these things are going to come into place. So I can appreciate everybody wanting to be on the school board. It's a lot of work. You know, but it's something that needs to be done because we're talking about our children, our grandchildren. Okay, and as I listen to them, things on measure M. You're talking about the pool. Your grandchildren and your children. And that's what I talk about when I go up and down the district, is what can we do? You know, not only am I going to fight for education, I'm going to work to lower energy prices. You have some of the lowest energy costs and I understand that. I say, city councilman in Gridley in Buick County, I was on that committee for the power because we have our own power system there in Gridley. You know, the micro-power, micro-grids, what we're really looking at to go to are the rural areas. Your fortune, you already have, consider kind of a micro-grid. Whereas other places, we don't. We have to suffer what's being on. We have to deal with the California Public Utilities Commission that just keeps raising rates. So my goal is to lower energy costs. Lower, phase in the green energy that they're talking about. Phase it in, don't shut us off. We all learned what happened with our gas engines. So I'm fighting for that. So go ahead, you lower the energy prices, your cost of living goes down. You all know that because you all travel. Because if you want to go anyplace, it takes you an hour, an hour and a half, two hours. And that's just the way it is. The other thing that we're looking at doing is to lower the regulations on small businesses. As I go up and down the state and I talk to people and one of the big things that's going to be happening is that we now, California now has a $20 billion debt on unemployment insurance. Where do you think the state of California is going to get that? From the same people that are running it right now, it's going to come back down here to taxes. And that's what's going to happen. You're going to find that, that's just another thing to go on. Small, small businesses are suffering because of it. I'm here for your support. It's a long ways up here. But you know what? I enjoy it every time. I like to fish. I like to, you know, I'm supported by a number of different organizations, whether it's California, you know, Rifle and Pistol Association, you know, California, Women for Liberty. So I have a number of different organizations to support me because I also believe that we need to establish safety in our communities. And the only we're going to do is be able to fund some of those. And the only way to do that, just change with that funding is we need to start holding the state of California accountable for what they're doing with your money, with my money. What are they doing with it? The governor just vetoed a bill that said they'd have to be held accountable because he doesn't think they have to be. Quite frankly, my opponent feels very much like the governor because it's just made one of his main supporters, is that very thing. You know, I live rural, I understand rural things. I have the fisheries behind me. I have the logging industry behind me. You know, I have small business behind me. Have the cattle, many of the cattle ranches behind me, whether, you know, in Crescent City, I belong to the farm crew up there. We need to do a change. We need to stop putting the cart before the horses. We need to start looking at the problems, getting a solution before we cause more problems. And one of the big things down there in the south is taking out Lake Pillsbury and causing all the problems down the road of 60,000 people without water. Well, let's find a solution before you do that. And that's not happening and it hasn't been happening. What we've seen, and the reason I'm running over the last, you know, 10 years, whether it's over there in Arizona, especially here in the rural areas, it's real simple. We keep being told, we'll take care of you during the election time. But do we see any changes? Do we see any changes? I know over in Crescent City, the only changes we see is the shutting down of fishing and so forth. So there's a lot of things. I'm glad to talk to everybody afterwards. I'm really enjoying this. I'm looking forward to some of your answers, especially on education, because I gave you a couple of questions. Just see what you have to say. So thank you very much and thank you very much for having this.